Zoning hearing this July 15, 2025. Today, we will have a moment of silence followed by a pledge before we officially begin our meeting. For those of you who are willing, please join me in our moment of silence. Thank you. You may rise for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Thank you, and our meeting is officially called to order. I will turn things over to John Peterson, our zoning manager, and he will walk us through today's zoning hearing.
And thank you, Madam Chair and Board. Today's hearing will be conducted with following process and procedure. Each case will be called in numerical order. We would ask that the applicant please stand and raise their hand when their case is called to show that they are in attendance. Then we're going to call to see if there's anyone here opposed to that specific case. We would also ask that the opposition please stand and raise their hand so that they can be counted for the official record. Then after recognizing both parties, they will be asked to come forward to be sworn in. The applicant will testify first, and then the opposition, if any, will testify second. It's important to note that each side gets 10 minutes to state their case concerns. There's not a process to reserve your time or to rebut. So you want to convey our information to the board within your 10-minute time period. Additionally, if there's more than one person who wishes to speak on a case, you may want to coordinate with each other about what you're going to talk about because each side gets 10 minutes in total, and you don't want to cover the same information over and over. From that point, the board may ask one or more persons to come back to the front for additional comments or questions. Then the board will make a decision to either approve, deny, hold, or continue the case at hand. There are two cases on today's printed agenda which have been withdrawn without prejudice, and these cases will not be heard today. First case is LUP 29 of 2025, Hadellis Perch. This case has been withdrawn without prejudice and will not be heard today. Next case is Other Business Item Number 32 of 2025, Kristen Morse. This case has been withdrawn without prejudice and will not be heard today. There are a number of cases on today's printed agenda which have been either held or continued, and these cases will not be heard either. First case is rezoning case Z2 of 2024, Florinor Development Group LLC. This case was continued by staff until the August 5, 2025 Planning Commission zoning hearing, so Z2 of 2024 will not be heard today. Rezoning case Z68 of 2024, Saks Ostel LLC. This case was held by the Board of Commissioners until the August 19, 2025 Board of Commissioners' zoning hearing, so Z68 of 2024 will not be heard today. Rezoning case Z9 of 2025, Whataburger Restaurants LLC. This case was continued by staff until the August 5, 2025 Planning Commission zoning hearing, so Z9 of 2025 will not be heard today. Rezoning case Z14 of 2025, Mike Heck. This case was held by the Planning Commission until the August 5, 2025 Planning Commission's zoning hearing, so Z14 of 2025 will not be heard today. Rezoning case Z15 of 2025, Sydney Silva and Amber Silva. This case was held by the Planning Commission until the August 5, 2025 Planning Commission's zoning hearing, so Z15 of 2025 will not be heard today. LUP 19 of 2025, Ian Elsalis. This case was continued by the Planning Commission until the August 5, 2025 Planning Commission's zoning hearing, so LUP 19 of 2025 will not be heard today. LUP 24 of 2025, Brandon Lorenzo. This case was held by the Planning Commission until the August 5, 2025 Planning Commission's zoning hearing, so LUP 24 of 2025 will not be heard today. LUP 25 of 2025, Luciana Midori Aoyama. This case was held by the Planning Commission until the August 5, 2025 Planning Commission's zoning hearing, so LUP 25 of 2025 will not be heard today. LUP 26 of 2025, Ronaldo Valdez. This case was continued by the Planning Commission until the August 5, 2025 Planning Commission's zoning hearing, so LUP 26 of 2025 will not be heard today. SLUP 2 of 2025, Free Bird Communications LLC. This case was continued by the staff until the August 5, 2025 Planning Commission's zoning hearing, so SLUP 2 of 2025 will not be heard today. Other Business Item Number 22 of 2025, Whataburger Restaurants LLC. This case was continued by the staff until the August 19, 2025 Board of Commissioners' zoning hearing, so Other Business Item Number 22 will not be heard today. And finally, Other Business Item Number 33 of 2025, Adewesa Faderen. This case was continued by the staff until the August 19, 2025 Board of Commissioners' zoning hearing, so Other Business Item Number 33 of 2025 will not be heard today. I would like to ask the people in today's audience, if you have a cell phone, please turn your phones off. When the phones ring, it does interfere with the broadcast and presentations. And I want to remind applicants, opposition, or any interested party that information is due to this board the Wednesday prior to this hearing. Any information submitted after the Wednesday due date may or may not be considered by the board at their discretion. And with that, Madam Chair and Board, I'm ready to start the consent agenda.
Yes, thank you.
Cobb County Board of Commissioners zoning hearing consent agenda for July 15, 2025. First case on consent is LUP 27, Hung Wind. Request a temporary land use permit to allow more unrelated people than the code allows in Land Lot 139 of the 16th District. The property is located on the west side of Timrose Road, south of Fay Drive. The Planning Commission recommends approval of LUP 27 for 12 months, subject to the following conditions. Number one, allow one extra unrelated person. Number two, applicant to provide the names of the two unrelated people to the zoning division manager. And number three, Department of Transportation comments or recommendations, including no parking in the right of way. Is the applicant present? Let the record show the applicant is here. Is there anyone here opposed to LUP 27? Let the record show there's no one opposed. LUP 28, Burton Hickory Church of Christ Incorporated. Request a temporary land use permit renewal to allow a daycare preschool facility in Land Lot 291 of the 20th District. The property is located on the north side of Burton Hickory Road, west of New Salem Road. The Planning Commission recommends approval of LUP 28 for 24 months, subject to the following conditions. Number one, site plan received by the zoning division May 1, 2025, with the district commissioner approved minor modifications. And number two, daycare-related banner signs to be no larger than 3 feet by 5 feet. Is the applicant present? Let the record show the applicant is here. Is there anyone here opposed to LUP 28? Let the record show there's no one opposed. Other Business Item Number 30 of 2025 is to consider amending the stipulations and site plan for Martin Nodangu regarding rezoning application number 56 of 1988. The property is located on the east side of Killarney Drive, north of Hurt Road, in Land Lot 783 of the 19th District. Staff recommends approval, subject to the following conditions. Number one, stormwater management comments. Number two, Cobb DOT comments. Number three, district commissioner to approve the final house elevations. And number four, site plan contained in the Other Business Packet. Is the applicant present? The applicant is here. Is there anyone here opposed to Other Business Item Number 30? Let the record show there's no one opposed. Other Business Item Number 31 of 2025 is to consider a road frontage reduction from 75 feet to 0 feet and other variances for Brian Barton for property located on the south side of Wood Hill Drive, east of Shaw Road, in Land Lot 376 of the 16th District. Staff recommends approval, subject to the following conditions. Number one, road frontage reduced to 0 feet. And number two, variances as mentioned in the background information. Is the applicant present? Let the record show the applicant is here. Is there anyone here opposed to Other Business Item Number 31? Let the record show there's no one opposed, and that completes the consent agenda, Madam Chair and Board.
Do you have a matter of inquiry with respect to LUP 27? There is a stipulation that was read in that persons who are unrelated, their names will be provided to zoning. I have never seen such a stipulation added to any of our land use permits. I think that's a bit of overreach, and I would like to understand why this is being added.
And that was a condition, Madam Chair, that the Planning Commission put on this case, and you know, by way of testimony from the applicant, the two people who are unrelated are both students at KSU. I think one's graduating this December, one's graduating next spring. So the Planning Commission, you know, thought it would be a good idea to put that in there. You know, staff's not opposed to you taking number two out.
I think it's absolutely inappropriate to have an individual named and reported to the zoning manager for unrelated persons. We have a number of LUPs that have unrelated persons. I would hate to establish this type of precedent. I could see it being repeated. It's onerous and it's overreaching. It's a complete invasion of privacy.
If I may.
Yes.
I think the Planning Commission's reason was to make it specific to the two unrelated that are in there now. Without naming them, we're giving him an extra year till they can graduate and find other living, another place to live. So instead of saying that they give the names, can we say that it's for these two unrelated that are currently in the property?
I would be supportive of that.
Is the applicant agreeable to that? To just say that it's just for these two that are there now for the year? And then after that, you have to come back for a renewal if you're going to rent again?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, I'd be amenable to that.
Okay, so we'll change number two to only the two current unrelated maybe in the House.
Right.
Okay. All right.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you.
Commissioner Granville.
Do we want to put a date of expiration on this?
It goes for 12 months.
It's 12 months.
12 months from when, though? Today.
Today.
Okay, just thank you for clarifying.
Any other commissioner have any other questions? Okay. Commissioners, do you have any other additions to consent or changes? Okay. With that, Commissioners, I move that we approve the consent agenda as it has been revised. Is there any further discussion? We'll call the question. The motion carries 5-0. Thank you. For any of you who are here as a part of the consent agenda, all of the matters on consent have been approved, and you are free to leave at this time. There's no further deliberation on your matters unless you just want to view our zoning hearing, which you're more than welcome to do. I guess everybody's going to hang tight.
It's very exciting stuff.
I know.
One person decided it is not that exciting.
All right, John.
Okay. Moving into the held and continued cases, first case we're going to hear is rezoning case Z7 of 2025, Fort and Col Street LLC. Request rezoning from R15 FST for townhomes and Land Lot 639 of the 19th District. The property is located on the northwest corner of Powder Springs Road and Wood Meadows Drive. The applicant is present. Is there anyone here opposed to rezoning case Z7? Okay. Let the record show there's five people here opposed. All those... Okay. And can I get a show of people here who are in support of rezoning case Z7? Please stand and raise your hands. Three, okay. Let the record show there's three people here in support. All those who would like to address the board, please come forward and be sworn in.
You can begin whenever you're ready.
Thank you. Good morning, Madam. Madam Chair, Board of Commissioners, I'm Kevin Moore here on behalf of...
I'm sorry, I hate to do this. I just wanted to interject. There are a number of people who stood up to speak. I don't know if there's anyone who stood up to speak in support. I would just be mindful of time if there is anyone.
Of course. Thank you. Again, I'm Kevin Moore here on behalf of the applicant owner in this application for rezoning. This came before you last month and was presented to you and was held for us to look at a very specific issue as it related to stormwater and drainage, which we have done, and I'll report on that. I just want to highlight again, just to remind you and refresh your recollection, this property is just under 5 acres. It's located on Powder Springs Road at the intersection, really known as the intersection of Pear Road and Powder Springs Road. This property, though, is on the other side of Pear Road, that intersection, Wood Meadows Drive, and it's shown on the screen before you. It is located at this intersection, which is a fully signalized intersection, as you can see from the zoning map that's in front of you right now. Across Powder Springs Road, on both sides of Pear Road, is a commercial and retail development that's contained within a neighborhood activity center. On the north side of this property is another shopping center. You see that Zone PSC, that's Planned Shopping Center. That area is also within a neighborhood activity center. This property, though, is on your future land use plan, identified as medium-density residential, which we believe is appropriate because of the fact that Wood Meadows Drive is a residential street that then leads to LDR, Low Density Residential, behind that. We have brought forth a proposal that does meet your comprehensive plan and future land use map and is within the medium-density residential future land use recommendation. This plan is for a total of 24 townhomes at this location, so it fully complies and is consistent with your future land use plan and comprehensive plan that you have adopted, as well as, from a land use standpoint, makes complete sense. You have a step down at this very busy intersection from the neighborhood activity center, the retail and the commercial that's there. You step down to the medium-density residential, the townhome development that we are proposing at this location of simply a 24-unit townhome community, to the low-density residential neighborhood behind it. That's good land use planning. That's actually textbook land use planning, and that's what we're bringing forward for your consideration again this morning. We will turn to the site plan, and I just want to go right to the issue that was identified for us last month. This was held by you as the board for us to review and provide more detail and solutions to a stormwater concern or item that led that discussion. All right, turning now to the site plan. Again, Wood Meadows Drive along the bottom, Powder Springs Road, located here. The stormwater item that was discussed at length was specifically regarding this proposed detention and stormwater management area here and where that would drain to and through and what. And we were asked and tasked with going to the adjoining neighbors to determine how that path would go. Where would that stormwater go? What we discussed last time, if you remember, it was shown that there is along the rear of these homes that are adjacent to us here, there is a drainage easement. And then to the north, on the north side of us, that drainage easement also goes along these homes that back up to this area as well. Stormwater's comments have been, and have been since the beginning, that this particular drainage area, leaving this detention pond, it would have to be determined and most likely piped, and it would need to be determined where that's going and then what downstream system it was connecting to. And that's part of the existing stormwater comments, which we are 100% in agreement with. We were tasked with meeting with and contacting these homeowners and owners of these properties to determine what would be an appropriate path and whether that would be acceptable and so forth, which we have done. We took the time to do that, and let me now turn to that little bit more detailed explanation for you. For reference, this area here along the bottom is our property that I was just pointing to that far northwest corner, and that's located right here at the very bottom. This property here is that PSC shopping center, its own planned shopping center, that was on our north side, and that's this property here. They have an existing stormwater pond and detention pond at the rear of that shopping center. These are the lots that are directly adjacent to us on our north. And then in this area here is the platted drainage easement that goes along this lot, which is 2250 Rock Ridge, is this lot here and home here, and there's an existing drainage easement that goes along the rear of that lot and also crosses the very bottom corner of this lot, which is 2251. That's an existing drainage easement per plat. This is actually a depiction from the final plat. That's a drainage easement when it was developed as a subdivision, and it was, and therefore was granted to Cobb County as a drainage easement. So what we were able to do was, number one, determine that this was the path of lease resistance, meaning we only would have to, you know, work with and cooperate with two owners of properties, and our drainage can go within this drainage easement, and then it connects into the drainage system that's in the public street here. We have sat down and met with both owners. This owner of 2251 is just a small portion here. That is an institutional owner. That's a leased home, and it's a corporate institution that owns that house and leases it, and they're one of the larger corporations that does that in this area. We have worked with them and contacted them and received what I would call assurances that we can reach an agreement with them. Obviously, we have to wait until final engineering and detail is done and completed, but they've assured us that they see no problem and issue with that. And it only concerns less than 250 square feet here at the bottom within the existing drainage easement. We also sat down with a woman that owns this home and lives there and had multiple meetings with her. She was likewise ultimately receptive to the concept because it actually will help her situation. Right now, she has this existing drainage. I don't want to call it a ditch as much as I want to call it an open type of swale slash ditch that's along her backyard. The detention and stormwater discharge from the shopping center here comes into that same drainage ditch, and she's had to maintain that riprap, done things on her own just to try to contain the water along the property line so it doesn't overtake her backyard, which it oftentimes does. So she's very interested and was very receptive to the idea that we would be able to come in and actually pipe it, because that's what we would be doing, and converting this from an open ditch to a pipe within that drainage, existing drainage easement, and we would be piping it as well as collecting the stormwater discharge from the shopping center, which would vastly improve her current situation, which we believe is a really substantial material resolution to the issue we were charged with in terms of direction from this Again, this is not a situation at this stage where, when you're in the zoning stage and the conceptual stage, where we can have agreements as such with written, signed agreements with these owners, simply because that would require the full engineering and detail review by staff, review by stormwater, and by the professional engineers, which would occur during the land disturbance and the permit and plan review process. We do, however, completely agree and 100% supportive of stormwater's comments, which encapsulate that very plan that we talked about. Stormwater just didn't have information as to which way we would go and how that would be accomplished, but it was in its comments and in their comments from Mr. Heath of Cobb Stormwater Division that this would need to be piped, and we would need to have the cooperation of whichever direction we were going so that the downstream connection could be made and those studies done. We're in agreement with that, and that ties us down to making sure that occurs. Absent that, we cannot move forward with the development at all. Zoning doesn't guarantee development. It simply allows for it in this case if we can meet those conditions, which is what we are agreeable to. And the two owners of these homes are very receptive to it. Number one, it's a very small area, and they've assured us that there's no issues with that. Number two, with the actual homeowner that lives in 2250, she was highly receptive to it, just wants to see the final engineering and details because it will vastly improve her situation. Again, this project comes to you, and rezoning application comes to you with a recommendation of approval from your professional staff, a recommendation of approval from the Planning Commission, and is a application that we believe is ready for your consideration and respectful approval today. Thank you.
We'll now hear from those who stood up to speak in opposition, and I believe there was more than one person. So just be mindful, you have 10 minutes total. You'll want to divvy up your time to enable others to speak. We'll go ahead and take our first speaker in opposition.
Good morning, Board of Commissioners. Travis McComb, Cobb County School District. Approval of this petition would cause concern for one of Cobb County School District schools as a result of an impact that enrollment already over capacity. We continuously monitor the enrollment and have added on to that school. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else here in opposition? There are 9 minutes and 38 seconds remaining.
Good morning, ladies and gentlemen. My name's Evan Richardson. I live in the Weaver Run subdivision, which is the southern part of the Horseshoe Bend area. We moved in 32 years ago because it has no traffic, has lots of trees, beautiful place, good schools. If you look at a map of the area, you'll see that the whole area is surrounded by 1/3 to 1/2 acre homes, lots of trees, lots of places for children to play. Some of the areas, though, in recent years have been developed to have townhomes. No trees, lots of concrete. That's part of my concern. When I see townhomes like this, it's all concrete. And as much as the drainage studies are showing that they can adequately do this, I don't know if they can with all the concrete that's being added there. If something was going to be built, it should be something in keeping with the lay of the land, which is how it's been for over 40 years, rather than just throwing up a bunch of houses in one spot. Thanks for your time.
Thank you. There are 8 minutes and 43 seconds remaining.
Good morning, Board of Commissioners. I'm Stephen Swanson, and I've spoke here a few times in protests for this rezoning. And I will just continue by reading the Cobb County tree ordinances here, or I'll start off with that. Section 50-2019, findings, intent, and statement of purpose. The Board of Commissioners hereby finds and declares that rampant growth and development in certain areas of the county has resulted in the loss of innumerable trees in those areas. Tree roots hold soil in place, and tree photosynthesis converts carbon dioxide to oxygen. Tree loss thus has contributed dramatically, to dramatically increase soil erosion and sedimentation. High-growth areas where natural green spaces are diminishing have left fewer trees to transform the oxygen, the carbon dioxide of over-increasing harmful vehic... transform the oxygen, the carbon dioxide of over-increasing harmful vehicular and industrial emissions, resulting in severe air quality degradation. Integrated forest canopies reduce the cost of maintenance of other co-located parts of the urban infrastructure. I'm reading you this in addition to the school board's comments about overcrowding and stuff. You know, we just, we don't want the land to be rezoned to denser zoning because it will increase traffic. The original traffic study, which, you know, you could call it a study, it's really just, you know, the national averages or whatever, said that nine people were going to leave. Whenever I called that out as being nonsense, they upped it to 12 people are going to leave in the morning. You know, the numbers are just really what you make them at this point, but I'll just keep reading the law for you. The benefits for trees are crucial to the long-term health and benefit, welfare and safety of citizens of the community. The removal of forest canopy from urban areas of the state and its replacement with more intensive land uses exact real costs upon the infrastructure, which must be borne by all citizens of the community. And granted, you guys are supposed to protect the people who live here already, not the people who can afford, you know, a $500,000 townhome. Community forests function to the benefit of local citizenry as part of the public infrastructure as much as streets, utilities, Stormwater Management Structures, and sewers. Healthy community forests increase local, commercial, and residential property values. But you guys don't really care about that. You just want the renters. A tree protection law is one part of a dedicated and integrated planning process dealing with land use. Impacts of impervious surface, urban hydrology and water quality, air quality, soil erosion, transportation, noise abatement, and wildlife habitat. You know, I'm just reading this like straight from the Cobb County Code of Ordinances. This is what you guys are supposed to be protecting, by the way. Another thing that I'd like to point out is like, you know, an open water ditch or whatever, you know, there's a natural term for it. It's called a creek, you know, or a river or something. And if you actually look, there's actually creeks in Horseshoe Bend, and, you know, I don't know specifically if this one is a named creek or not, but there's two or three creeks in Horseshoe Bend that are just increasingly, you know, getting piped over, you know, getting rid of our natural habitat. Another thing that, you know, has been felt, been pointed out here is the elevation map for this lot. So, where they want to put that detention pond on the top left is actually the high point of this entire lot. So, they're actually going to cut down all the trees and then regrade it, and it's like, it makes no sense to me, you know, making water flow uphill, but, you know, as long as they get the rezoning passed, I guess it doesn't really matter what their plans are. Another thing is, you know, traffic, you know, walking is already dangerous at that intersection because people want to beat the light, especially in rush hour, whenever there's a straight-up gridlock on Powder Springs Road going to Barrett, because for some reason you guys put a Chick-fil-A in, you know, right there. The schools, they're crowded. We already touched on that. Let's see here. I already read you guys the Model Urban Forest book. I got the petition. People signed it. I would like to comment on one of the homeowners that they needed permission from being an institution. Like, that's just freaking crazy. Let's see. The mission of primary, the primary mission of local government is the protection of the health, safety, and welfare of the community it serves. I don't know if that corporation that's giving them permission is even in our community, you know what I'm saying? Trees are an important part of a town's infrastructure, contributing to the community well-being. And, you know, I'm complaining about trees, and I know that they're just going to like clear-cut everything and then plant like, you know, 10-foot-tall, 2-inch-wide pine trees or whatever that'll never grow and really just more of act like a visual barrier for the people who don't want to see the ugly houses that they'll put up. But here's an interesting fact, right? Controlled experiments had subjects stressed and then exposed to different environments, and they were like hooked up to heart monitors and blood pressure systems and stuff. And after the point of induced stress, the recovery time for the subject exposed to a nature setting is, here, I'll show you. Yeah, it's going to be hard to see, but you can see here the blood pressure, the dash line up at the top here is the subject exposed to traffic, so the blood pressure is higher, whereas the solid line here is the subject exposed to a nature setting. And then the middle line here, that's just barely under the dash line, the traffic line, is exposed to a shopping mall, which, you know, they're advertising as being next to this development. So, basically, someone who lives in this development will not recover from stress faster. They will have higher muscle tension and blood pressure because they look out their window and see a shopping mall instead of trees. That's what they're selling. Anywho, so, a lot of the neighbors all around Horseshoe Bend don't like this, especially because of the dangerous precedent it sets. We're a homesteading community. We care for our land, and you can't care for concrete. I mean, you can pressure wash it, I guess. In the, in section 50-223 of the density requirements, it says each development shall be evaluated to assess whether all reasonable options have been considered, which preserve the maximum amount of existing forest cover. And like, all the plans that they give, they don't even, it's like this line in the law doesn't even exist. They're just, they're going to clear-cut it, you know, cover it with concrete, and they have not evaluated whether all reasonable options have been considered, which preserve the maximum amount of forest cover. And whenever I say forest, I'm not talking about what these new developments in the past four years popping up where they clear-cut everything and they just jam a whole bunch of trees in like a three-feet section next to the road as like a visual barrier, sort of acting like a fence. That actually goes against the stress-reducing effect of trees and actually does the opposite according to this Georgia Model Urban Forest. So, with that, I will say, please say no. Thank you.
Thank you. We are out of time, so I will turn things over to the district commissioner.
Thanks. I will ask John to address the tree ordinance, but before doing so, I do have a question for Mr. McComb. Thank you for joining us today. Just a quick question. Do you have an estimate or an idea of how many students or high school students may come out of this community?
Based on our old formula, state formula, we estimate it could be around five students.
Five students?
And the capacity is already over 383 students for this high school of Osborne.
Five students, and you said that's based on the state formula?
State formula, yes.
Can you share that formula with me?
I don't have the formula on me.
Okay.
Yes.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Okay.
All right. Thanks. Okay. John, if you wouldn't mind?
Sure.
Just addressing the, there were several concerns shared by Mr. Sawyer, and he attended last month as well, this community meeting. If you can just touch on the ordinances as it relates to trees and our requirements with the zoning applications?
Sure. Cobb County does have a tree ordinance in chapter 50 of the Cobb County Code, and it does talk to trying to keep as many trees as possible, and then if you can't keep certain trees, there's a replacement formula we use to recompense what was taken down. In the zoning category, there is a 10-foot landscape buffer that we're going to enforce. There's a permanent construction buffer we're going to enforce. In other cases, the county does have buffers for streams, for impervious setbacks and things like that, so we will enforce those buffers also. It's my recollection that Cobb County was one of the first counties in Atlanta, in the Atlanta area, to adopt a tree ordinance in the early 90s, and we actually hired an arborist to oversee that, and we still have one on staff today. You know, with this type of development, you know, there will be a lot of clearing and grading, so there will be a lot of tree recompense that's going to be required in addition to the buffers that the board's going to require.
Leave on this one as well, on the western side of the development, the PC recommended a 20-foot buffer?
Yes, and that's twice what the code requires for zoning the district.
Okay. All right. Thank you. All right. Thanks. Do you guys have any questions for John?
I believe permission, Adrian.
Yeah, John, if you can just elaborate, because I think there's confusion with our tree ordinance and pine trees. And essentially, the recompense that you talked about is only if they take down a hardwood tree, not necessarily...
A specimen tree that's in good health. You know, pine trees don't normally count. You know, in all my years of being here, I think we only had one specimen pine tree, and that was over by KSG, and that was in excess of 36 inches, I think. But all of the pine trees normally don't count as your trees that you would save.
Commissioner, I do have a question or two.
For the gentleman who's with the school board, do you mind approaching, please? Yes, if you can help me understand and follow up to some questions Commissioner Sheffield had. The formula you have from the state tells you that there'll be five additional high school students specifically?
Yes.
Okay. How about the other grades or schools, elementary and middle?
For the elementary, it won't affect it because they are already under capacity as well as the middle school.
The middle school's under capacity?
Correct.
Okay. And there is the Career Training Academy. Are those numbers included with Osborne or are those separated?
Those are included.
They are included with Osborne?
Yes.
So, we potentially have students coming from other areas of the county contributing to that enrollment count?
Correct.
Okay. So, it could be that the students that live in the area may be undercounted, but we're bringing in students from other parts of the county into the school?
Correct.
Okay. Thank you. Commissioner Gamble also has a question.
How many students attend the Career Academy?
It has a capacity of 500 students.
I do not have that number because it was just specifically Osborne.
Okay.
All right.
Thank you. And then I also have just a question maybe for G.I. S., if they can show the map of the area and just zoom out so we can get a sense of the Horseshoe Bend community in relation to... Sorry. I know it's a pretty large community. And Commissioner, I know you didn't call up the applicant. Are you going to ask the applicant about the trees or address that?
No, I'm going to start with, I'm going to start with Stormwater, but I guess we can start with Kevin and the trees and just talk to us a little bit about that.
Hi, is there any consideration? Go ahead, Commissioner.
No, that's okay. There has been, and thank you, Kevin, you've met with myself and the community several months ago with Mr. Sawyer on the call, and we attempted to address the concerns on that call as well. But talk to us a little bit about what the development proposes with respect to the trees and outside of the additional 10 feet, because on the western side of the property, which is closest to the Horseshoe Bend community, there will be a 20-foot buffer, which will be an additional 10 feet from what the county requires.
So, I think Mr. Peterson did a good job of explaining how Cobb's tree ordinance works. Not only do you have to do the tree survey and identify specimen trees, and then there's a calculation that says you have to then plant this many additional trees if those are removed to achieve a certain standard that's calculated by the arborist and the tree folks to do that. So, in addition to that, there are additional tree requirements. This property does now require a 20-foot buffer along the western property line, which is, which is double the required buffer, so that will have to be fully planted according to the standards, which would require that within two years of planting, it has to provide 100% visual screening so that, Cobb County Arborist is very specific about how that is planted, and that would be quite a number of trees for that planted area as well. Also, I think it's important to understand, too, that this property is currently zoned R15, which would be about 10 homes. So, if you pulled in a subdivision street for an R15 development and did 10 homes here, you'll have just the exact same number of trees removed as this development. This property is a 4.8-acre tract. We're able to, with a townhome development, ensure that the detention pond in the top, that's in that top left that we're talking about, that is the low area. If you saw the topography, the higher is kind of in the middle, and we're able to then make sure we're taking care of Stormwater in both directions.
I'm sorry, we've got to keep this confined to the trees. I know, I'm listening to you, and you, but this is not, this is not opportunity for you to continue your, your mad eye. I need you to confine your response to the tree.
I will, and I was just about to tie it. My point being is that development of this property, whether it's under its existing zoning of R15 or as proposed, will largely result in the same amount of grading area and that would be for this development. You have a 4.8-acre site. Those home sites have to be built, the pads have to be built, and the road has to be built, and the Stormwater has to be built, whether it's 24 townhomes or 10 single-family homes as well. So, that's how I was tying it back in, from a tree consideration standpoint.
And, oh, sorry. And along the line of the trees, can you talk to us about the trees within the development? There was concern shared by someone in opposition, I just got his first name, I think it was Richard. So, talk to us about the landscape plan or the tree plan within the development.
The proposed development, sure. So, you've got, if you'll see that along Powder Springs Road, we do have another Stormwater Management Pond there, so which, number one, is required under the county ordinance is that that be fully screened as well as fenced. That's our main entrance coming in off of Powder Springs and Wood Meadows, so that will be fully landscaped, treed, because that's what you would expect for a new community with the subdivision community signage as well as fully landscaping those areas. Some of them, which would be left, a portion of them could be left undisturbed, but most of them would be then replanted so that you have a very vibrant landscaping frontage along those streets, both Wood Meadows and Powder Springs Road. And then interior as well, and these are nice homes, $400,000 homes that'll, that people are going to want to be invited to and want to feel like they're at home when they come home.
Okay. Thank you.
Certainly.
Yeah, so, just in piggybacking on that, beyond the entrance and the buffer, is there tree landscaping inside the development?
Yes. Cobb ordinances do require trees to be planted throughout the development, and including we have, if you'll see where our community street has a big, a large park island in the middle, where there'll be additional tree planting. So, that's a planted green space area that'll have trees planted there, as well as to the right of where that mouse is pointing, in the area at the end of that will also be for a community gathering area and structure there that will have tree plantings, additional tree plantings as well. It'll occur throughout the development.
Okay. Thank you.
Of course.
Okay. Thank you. I'm going to have Andrew to come up...
I'm sorry, sir. It's not appropriate for us to be fielding questions from the audience during this time. I'm sorry.
Okay. Thank you, Kevin.
Thank you, Ms.
I'll have Andrew to come up.
Thank you, Kevin, I'll have Andrew to come up.
Hello, Andrew Heath, Cobb County Stormwater Management.
Good morning, Andrew. Last month, we continued this case because there was concern regarding several parcels on Wood Meadow, 2250 and 2251. We heard testimony or a follow-up from Kevin Moore that he connected with both owners of the property, and I just wanted you to talk a little bit more about your concerns for those that may not have been here, and just to refresh the commission, and also with his updated plan.
Right, thank you. Yes, as Mr. Moore was saying, in the particular area we're talking about is in that upper-left corner of the property there, the northwest corner, and what happens to water runoff when it leaves that corner of the property. And that was identified initially, that there really wasn't a good conveyance path to get water around those homes, sometimes it maybe went between the homes, behind the homes, and that's compounded by the fact that immediately north of this project, this project site, there's an existing shopping center with a significant-sized parking lot and a detention pond that also discharges onto that same neighbor, which is, I believe, 2250, I think is the address. And so, we discussed ways of accommodating that, and Mr. Moore's worked with those individuals as he spoke with, about constructing a pipe system through there, in that area, to capture the runoff, not only from their proposed detention pond, but also from the existing detention pond for the commercial property that's north of this site. And so that's going to be a great benefit for those downstream neighbors, because now the water's not going to be just running through kind of unimproved, kind of inadequate swales and over-the-ground surface, it's going to be better contained in that pipe. And also, the detention pond that is going to be constructed on this site, we're going to be able to look at it and its design, and if necessary, we can control the flow rates out of that pond, so that we can make sure that we don't overload any of that drainage system that's downstream. So it's going to be, overall, I think, a great improvement doing that, and so I appreciate their and your attention to that issue.
Okay, thank you. And when you mentioned that it would be a benefit to the homeowners, are you referencing 2250 and 2251?
Yes, those two, and it appears to me, although I haven't been out there walking around in their backyard, but looking at G.I.S., there's a broad swale that you can see in the topography, you might call it a valley, that kind of begins on this site, and it heads off up to the northwest, and then it kind of follows along a lot of those lots, along the rear of the lots, in those lots that are facing that Rock Creek Drive. And so, because that water is now going to be contained and not just freely flowing through their backyards, there will be several other homeowners along there that are not really, they're not going to have any work done on their property, but they're going to benefit, because that drainage is not going to just be running onto them now, it's going to be better contained, so.
Okay. I think those were the main concerns with your stormwater comments and those issues that were addressed at last month's hearing. I don't know if the board has any questions for Andrew, but go ahead.
I do, Andrew. The applicant's attorney, Kevin Moore, stated that they were going to essentially capture the water that's coming from the detention pond in the shopping center. How are they going to do that, because they don't have the authority to go on to their site and re-pipe to make this a solid connection? So how are they going to capture and pipe water that they have real no authority to get to, or has an easement been attained for that?
Right. And that's a good question. I think this whole plan, at this point, it hasn't been, as Mr. Moore said, fully designed, and I think he showed there's a little small easement that would need to be obtained from the corner of one of those residential properties as well. And then there's the issue of the commercial property. If the water left the commercial property, there is probably a way that they could let it continue, in other words, if the commercial property owner didn't want to cooperate, they might be able to allow that water to just continue to flow by gravity onto 2250, and then capture it on 2250 in a pipe system on 2250. So there might be some ways that they can work around that. It would be most desirable if they could just work directly with those property owners and obtain, you know, the permissions, if you will, to directly connect that together. But at this point, you're right, they haven't obtained all the formal easements and done the design, so there is, there's still some finality that's not there yet.
And I guess where my concern is, is while stormwater is giving comments, what Mr. Moore told us they were willing to do, I don't know, is that included in stipulation letters, is that a separate agreement? But we have no documentation and control to ensure that that gets done for that property owner.
Well, for the shopping plaza.
To ensure that the shopping plaza water gets tied into this stormwater. That's not in our stormwater comments.
Mm-hmm, right, I understand, I'll address that.
Okay.
I'm going to have Kevin actually to come back up and address the concern as well, when we're done with Andrew. Go ahead.
Andrew, to the east, I'm sorry, to the west, where Horseshoe Bend is, how is it going to impact those neighbors? I mean, we heard about the neighbors to the north, the little sections for 2251 and 2250, that they're agreeable, according to the applicant, but I didn't hear these over here, 2390, 2391, all those that border the west side.
Right. And so, when they develop their plan for stormwater management on site, they're going to have to figure out a way to get all of the water runoff from those townhomes to go to the detention pond. This plan is probably not at the level of detail that would show that, they may have some sort of pipe system, or they may have some sort of open channel behind those townhomes to direct that down to their detention pond. But in net, the idea being that, once it's developed, any area that remains in that rear area behind those townhomes that front along those lots, those existing lots that you were mentioning to the west, that area, any area that's left back there would be very, very minimal. So that way, those owners that are immediately contiguous there to the west wouldn't really see any adverse impact from runoff, because we would capture it and get it to the ponds.
Okay. And, okay, that's all I have for Andrew. Oh, okay, okay. You're going to call him back? Yeah, I am, when we're done with Andrew.
And piggybacking on some of the discussion, that there is contemplation, that there needs to be consideration of increased stormwater flow, but staff comments also do reflect the need for obtaining an easement, so let's not, yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
I'm sure you'll address that, and I'm sure you'll be able to protect that.
Mm-hmm. But would that come in play in review?
Typically, yes, once they develop their plan, then we would be able to figure out exactly where they need easements, like we think one right now, of course, would be at the corner of that residential lot, that's right there at the northwest corner of the site, they need a small easement from that property owner, and then also probably need to work with the, that commercial property owner. And then, once they have a better plan, they know exactly where they want to put everything, then that's when they would really go to them to obtain whatever easements they needed.
Right, but those discussions need to be had in the beginning-
Absolutely.
-because obviously you need permission before you can do anything, okay.
Yep.
Thank you, Andrew, does anyone have any other questions? No? Kevin? So, stormwater comments, number 11, it speaks to the drainage easement, and I believe that's Horseshoe Bend, the plaza. Have you connected with the owner of the plaza to discuss the easements?
Let me show you what our plan is, because we have not had an opportunity to get with the owners of the plaza about what they would or would not cooperate, because what's occurred is, their particular detention pond, it is not tied into a system. It was developed and built many, many years ago, so it's not been one that, like we would do today. But I'll show you, it's on the exhibit that I've showed during my main presentation, and it identifies what our plan is, if I could do that. So again, going back to 2250, which is this property here, again, this is an existing drainage easement that runs along the rear of the property and then turns down to the street. This is the detention pond for the shopping center. It currently, at this point, this detention pond discharges water, and it discharges it to a location about here, is where that water comes in. That's where this owner has also placed, on her own account, has done some improvements to put riprap, because the water from the shopping center detention pond comes in and empties here, and tends to, as Mr. Heath was saying, it doesn't want to stay in a kind of undefined drainage swale, it kind of gets into her backyard. So what we propose is to a drain top inlet, which would capture that off-site stormwater. In other words, we don't have to have an agreement from the shopping center owner, we can capture the water as it drains, once it leaves that site and enters the drainage, existing drainage easement. Basically, we're putting a drain, an inlet, that would be sized appropriately, so the water goes into that inlet, and then goes into the pipe system that we would be putting in, which would be the way we would capture that, and not have to go on to the shopping center plaza at all.
Okay.
And so this, and certainly, we're happy for this exhibit to be submitted-
Please.
...as part of this record, to guide us when we get to the actual final engineering. But that's how that's accomplished.
Okay. If you can just leave that up, and I'll just have Andrew to come up and just confirm.
He didn't have the benefit of seeing this, so you can read it right there.
Yeah, sure. And as Mr. Moore was saying, you can see in this outline here, generally, this whole area up here, the plaza area, is higher than the land down below, so the water wants to drain down, once it goes through the pond, down. And it would be ideal, the detention pond pipe is, it's approximately, I think it's sort of about right in that region, and it comes out, I think it ends on their property, and then sort of drains down, like Mr. Moore was saying. So it would be, in an ideal situation, it would be ideal if there could be a direct connection between the two. If for some reason, the shopping center owner didn't want to participate, then there probably is another scenario where we could improve this rear area and just capture it directly into the storm drainage system that they're going to construct. So we can probably handle that regardless of whether the shopping center wanted to have work done on their property or not.
Okay, thank you. Do you guys have any follow-up questions for Andrew? Andrew, hold on, I'll tell you.
Andrew, I have a follow-up question regarding the proposed drain top inlet. Once that is put on that property owner's property, whose responsibility is it to maintain it? And the reason why I asked this, for some context for the board, we have, in drain top inlets in some of our residential neighborhoods that are not necessarily shown on the plat, and the county has taken the position that it is that private homeowner's responsibility to maintain. So just for clarification, if they put this in, who then is responsible for maintaining it and making sure it is functioning properly?
To the extent that the solution involved an open channel, typically, as you were saying, the county's position is if it's an open channel, that is, it's just the water flowing along the ground surface, there's no formal infrastructure, then usually, that's something that the homeowner would be maintaining, or the landowner would be maintaining. On this plat, I honestly have forgotten offhand, this is a little snippet of the plat, but as long as the actual drainage infrastructure, that is, the pipes, inlets, the actual built, constructed infrastructure, as long as it has been dedicated on the plat with an easement, then typically, the county accepts that for maintenance. And so, in this particular case, this area here where this infrastructure's done, I guess, really, regardless of this plat, I'm pretty sure here, if I had to bet, I'm pretty sure that the infrastructure within this subdivision has been dedicated with easements to the county, so in other words, it would be a county-maintained system. However, that lot going through, I believe it's 2250, where the pipe system is shown, even if that were not the case, we could have them record a plat such that the county could maintain that. However, I'm pretty sure that that's actually already the case with this subdivision, that the pipe and easements that are shown on the plat and dedicated to the county would be county-maintained. And actually, that's a final step that would occur later in the development, once the pipe system is in place, because this new pipe system that's proposed now isn't actually shown on any plat right now, that would have to be a plat revision to show that new pipe and easement, so that that dedication process to the county could occur. So that would actually be a final step that would be done, you know, near the end of development, to be sure that we've captured that.
Thanks, Commissioner, we can have Kevin also help to address what the intent is.
I was going to call him up-
I think that was good.
...once Andrew was done, if you guys have any questions. Andrew?
Just want to make sure I'm answering which question?
Commissioner, you. Regarding the shopping plaza, and we heard that there is a scenario in which you will not have to secure an easement, but if you can just, you know, I guess, go over this again and share with us why you wouldn't necessarily have to have an easement, and also speak to the inlet that Commissioner Gamble raised with regarding the plat in the county taking over, well, actually, Andrew already touched on that.
Right. And so, I'll start with, as Mr. Heath was explaining, and this is, there's an existing 20-foot drainage easement along the rear of this property, of the 2250, that's part of the final plat when this portion was developed years ago. So that drainage easement and that stormwater system has already been platted, dedicated, accepted by Cobb County. So that drainage easement is in favor of Cobb County there. So with the shopping center's water, as Mr. Heath was explaining, it leaves their site in approximately those locations when it comes on to this property. The problem that this property is suffering from is that there's no formal, you know, upgraded infrastructure to handle it, other than a somewhat of a swale, at times a ditch type of thing that's handling that water, so it overflows. What she has done is put riprap there to try to just get it where it doesn't get up into her backyard. What we're proposing is, in the event we cannot, and this is in the event we're not able to obtain an easement and just pipe it from the shopping center, we can put in drop inlets at that location, like Mr. Heath was saying, those are drains, so the water is coming in, and it's going to, when it reaches that spot where it's in the drainage easement, then we have a drain that catches it and puts it right into the pipe. And so that way, it's contained in an improvement and goes, just with the rest of the water, to the stormwater system in the street. So that's how that happens, we're able to capture it one way or the other, either directly pipe in it, or we put in the drain system, all within the easement area that's there.
Yes, and that is consistent with staff comments here, it says-
Yes.
...perhaps the best option is for the applicant to investigate installing a pipe across the rear of 2250 Rock Creek Drive, within the existing drainage easement-
Yes, ma'am.
...to connect to the existing storm drain pipe system at the north side of 2250.
Yes, ma'am. And we agree, that's what we think is the best option. It helps actually somebody else, so that's just a win.
And just for clarification, oh, sorry, go ahead. Just for clarification, that's the solution you shared at the top of the hearing?
That's correct.
Okay. And then, to-
And then to Commissioner Gamble's point and Andy's point, will these pipes be dedicated to the county for maintenance?
Yes.
Okay.
So we would, as part of that plan review process, stormwater, stormwater would require us then to show this as a new plat for this area along 2250, so that it could be properly recorded and accepted as part of the system that's there, as an improvement to the existing county drainage easement system that would be required of us.
Okay. Thank you.
Of course, thank you.
That's all I have, Commissioner. With anyone? You had a question? You sure? Okay.
I'm sorry, Kevin, can you come back up? I thought it was in the book, but I wasn't. Thank you. So this is a total of 24 townhomes?
Maximum of 24 homes, correct.
Okay, and the 4.89 acres, did you consider an R-15 plan?
We did look at R-15 because it's zoned R-15, but again, it didn't work as an R-15 development, given the development infrastructure that's required here. You have two detention ponds unless you want to just completely obliterate the site, as well as the street, so as an R-15, it doesn't work from a feasibility standpoint. And R-15 is frankly not consistent with the land use plan either.
Well, right, but the other neighborhoods that are R-15 and even R-20 are LDR. Just because this is MDR, it does allow for up to five units per acre, but that doesn't mean it has to be five, under, five or under. I'm just saying, you know, with the surrounding neighborhoods that are R-15 and LDR, I know you've got the shopping center on one side, but this west side is, is all R-15, single family and LDR.
That's correct. And this one's MDR, and actually, MDR, medium density residential recommends densities between 2.5 and five units per acre. R-15 is around two or 2.1 units per acre, so that's why when I said R-15 is not consistent with the land use plan is because it's not.
Okay. Do, do you know how many homes it would allow for R-15, straight R-15, without variances?
About 10.
10?
10, yeah.
Okay. Commissioner, I do have a question about something transportation or road related. Is it okay if I ask him at this time, or were you gonna call up someone from transportation? Thank you. If we can show the plan for the development, I believe there's a, these are built, let me say these, the road is built to public standard, but there's an alley at the back, that's a private alley?
This is a, it's actually a private street.
Oh, these are private streets?
Private roads to county standard.
Built to county standards, that's correct.
Okay.
So it's not, there was an initial plan, there was an initial plan, it was filed that way, but then we've converted this so that we can...
Okay. So that means those 25 owners will be responsible for the maintenance of those roads?
Yes, but we've also included within our conditions, worked with Cobb DOT, that in this event, as private streets, number one, they're built to county standards, number two, we have to have an independent study that's provided at plan review that shows what those maintenance costs will be going into the future, and then the applicant slash developer is required to fund into a separate account what that study and DOT says approves as saying, this is an amount of money that would be appropriate per that study to give the homeowners association seed money so that they have the money set aside for maintenance in the future. So that's part of our stipulations that we've worked with.
Thank you.
Of course, thank you for your questions.
Any other questions from anyone? You want to hear from staff? No? Okay.
Just to piggyback off the chairs, questions, since this is going to be a private development, the homeowners will also be responsible for the two detention ponds. So this is a very expensive, long-term development for these 24 owners.
You're not kidding. Okay. Let me just take a quick look at the stipulation letter. And what she's referencing regarding detention pond is for new developments to take on the responsibility of the maintenance of the detention pond.
But since this is a private road, they, they, it's understood that when you are private, you take on all infrastructure. So I don't know if, if the new code is necessarily applicable here because it's already covered under private infrastructure.
Thank you. Okay. There is a lot to unpack here, but I'm gonna ask Bill Rowling a question. I'm gonna start with the easement. Testimony was shared that there may or may not be a need for an easement on this property, but obviously, I want to make sure that if that is the case, we're covered through a condition. Is it your legal recommendation that I include a stipulation to speak to the easement?
Are you talking about the, the water runoff?
The easement to the shopping plaza.
For the water runoff?
Yes.
Yes, for the water runoff. I mean, that would be covered under plan review for them to be able to handle that. They don't need to be as separate. If that's what the requirement is, then Andy's team would be able to make sure that that would be able to, for it to be able to work.
Okay. All right, thank you. Okay. And Kevin, just to confirm, the May 27th was the last stipulation letter that you submitted? You can answer from there, okay, all right. Yeah, that was the last one I have, okay. All right. I think I'm ready to move forward. Thank you all for joining us today. Thank you to the homeowners who have been engaged from the very beginning for attending the community meeting we had several months ago and sharing your concerns. There was also concern with respect to the development and the city of Powder Springs, which is relatively close to this area, and I just wanted to point out that the area on East West Connector in Macklin, or New Macklin near, near Walmart, that's within the city limits of Powder Springs. There were several concerns and feedback shared regarding development in that area, and I just wanted to, to provide that additional information to you all. Staff recommended approval based on the comp plan and the future land use of MDR. And based on, based on the information shared in the testimony, and I really appreciate, Andrew, your involvement, because I was very concerned regarding the stormwater and how it would impact or adversely impact the surrounding parcels and the neighbors. And Kevin, thank you for reaching out to the two homeowners that would be most impacted by, by this development. I am in support of staff's recommendation, I believe, along this corridor on Powder Springs Road with the neighborhood shopping in close proximity, I think that this proposed development would be in alignment with the commercial corridor of Powder Springs Road. And I'll also share that I've had conversations in the past regarding proposed development that included fast food restaurants and also convenience stores on this same corner, so I'm glad to see that there is a proposal at least for residential development. I understand the desire for the single family, possibly R-15, that is, as it is currently zoned, but we're also charged with trying to meet the needs of housing as well, and our shortage of housing inventory. It was mentioned earlier by, I believe, someone in opposition to not concentrate density in one particular area. And as I review applications in my district, that's precisely what I am attempting to avoid. So while I'm trying to meet the needs of those that are looking for homes in Cobb County, and also try and spread what's being called as density, it becomes a balancing act. As more homeowners come into the market, there is a desire for different housing types, different housing stock, and this also offers that. I think, again, with it being along the corridor of Powder Springs Road, which is one of the commercial corridors in District Four, in this area of Marietta, considering it's adjacent to a neighborhood shopping plaza, there are a couple of residential senior living communities in close proximity to this development as well, which I'll note is a lot more dense than the proposed development. So for those reasons and staff recommendations, I am prepared to make a motion. And I make a motion to approve Z-7 2025 with the following conditions. Let me, let me just get to staff. Letter of agreeable stipulations dated May 27, 2025, from Kevin Moore. And let me get back to here. And as it relates to his letter, stipulation letter, I'd like to revise the following, that there should be a black vinyl clad fence around the detention pond. And just work with me here because I'm going to toggle between two documents. And I believe, okay. And that there should be landscaping, and Kevin, you may already have this in the letter, but black vinyl clad fence around the detention pond, excuse me, with landscaping to, to provide visual screening from the detention ponds, install lighting at the kiosk area, the end units to consist of 50% brick stone to complement the facade. The fire pit shall be masonry and shall be in-ground. Benches and trash receptacles to be installed near the amenity area. Matching entry monument shall be on both sides of the main entrance with hardwired uplights. Sunday construction hours are from 9:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m. And I'm just looking to see if there's anything I need to add from today's discussion. And I don't think I have any. Did I miss anything? Did you all catch anything that I should add?
Commissioner, given the conversation, I would ask that you sign off on whatever stormwater plan there is so you can put your eyes on it.
Okay, all right. Good recommendation, thank you. And District Commissioner to review and sign off on stormwater plans.
And I don't know if you have, I don't know if you typically put in that you review all architectural renderings and landscape plans?
Thank you. Thank you for that. District Commissioner to review the final elevations.
Say approve, review and approve.
Review and approve the final elevation. And District Commissioner to review and approve, let's see, landscape plan and the final site plan. And all other staff comments and recommendations not otherwise in conflict.
I'll second. Is there any discussion? We'll call the question. The motion carries 3-2 with Commissioners Burl and Gamble in opposition. Commissioners, I need to take a brief fire break. Let's please come back at 10:30.
Let's please come back at ten-thirty. Thank you. Hello, and welcome back to our Cobb County Board of Commissioners zoning hearing this July fifteenth, two thousand and twenty-five. I'll turn things over to our zoning manager, John Peterson, to help queue up our next matter.
Okay, next case on the agenda is rezoning case Z ten of two thousand and twenty-five, Revive Land Group LLC, request rezoning from R twenty to R itself for a residential senior living subdivision, land lots four ninety-eight, five thirty-eight, five thirty-nine, five seventy-two, and six thirteen of the nineteenth district. Property is located on the south side of Macklin Road, the east side of Hopkins Road, and the north side of John Petrie Road. The applicant is present. Is there anyone here opposed to rezoning case Z ten? The director shows no one opposed.
Okay, you want to have the hearing? Are we gonna throw this on concept?
No, I can, I can just update and propose the solution.
I'd rather have some stuff on there. Okay, all right.
Or however, it's your hearing, so.
Okay, okay. Go ahead, whenever you're ready.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Commissioners, Kevin Moore here on behalf of the applicant Revive Land Group in this application for rezoning. This, if you recall, was fifty-two, fifty-three acre tract located off of Macklin and Hopkins Road primarily. I'm just gonna turn, if you'll remember, you'll remember this as the, the dam issue and the lake issue and how we're gonna handle that. We were directed after it being held for last month to see what solutions we could come up with, be specific, hopefully be specific, be targeted to resolve what happens to the dam in the future, and who's responsible, and how will we go about doing that. So I want to just show you very briefly and then just tell you how that has been resolved, I think, to the, a true win-win-win situation. I think a win for the county, it'll be a win for this development and the Future Homeowners Association, and a win for the adjacent owner, Mr. Chumley, that you heard from last, last month that had that concern. Very quickly, just to show you the overall development, Macklin Road's here, and then you have Hopkins Road, and then John Petrie, John Petrie Road is way over here. And the area we're talking about is this lake sometimes called Phillips Lake, is look, is here. Mr. Chumley's property is this property that's adjacent to us in here. And if you remember, this property actually goes all the way down and goes all the way to John Petrie Road, and here is the dam. So what I'm gonna get Cornelius to help me with here is just kind of zoom down onto that area. And you'll see that we've shaded it. And this area comprises the portion of the dam that's owned by this parcel and owned by these property owners. What, and if you remember, there's actually three owners of that dam currently. One owner owns a very small percentage, probably less than twenty percent. This parcel owners, it was an assemblage, owns a third, forty percent or more of it here, and then Mr. Chumley's property owns this portion here. The middle portion consists of the main spillway for the dam, and then the emergency spillway area is located on Mr. Chumley's property here from the dam. What we've proposed to do is to take this shaded area here on the site plan, which is comprised of all of our property that is, consists of the dam, and then the area all the way down to John Petrie Road, which includes the entire spillway area. Most of that is wetlands and floodplain, but it's all of this portion of the property. We would be, we are conveying that to Mr. Chumley, who is this, again, this adjacent owner. It'd be conveyed to him, so at that point, he would be the far and away the majority owner of the dam. His property actually is far more affected by the condition status of this lake. I mean, he has a beautiful home, a beautiful property there that looks out over this lake. He also has this emergency spillway portion of the property here. This would mean he would have control over the primary spillway, emergency spillway, most of the dam. And so that the future dam maintenance or any dam requirements or any work that needs to be done, he's able to do that then. He's, and, and, he's in charge of his own domain at that point in time as a private owner, and can address that as he needs to for his own purposes and for purposes of the lake. So it accomplishes, from Mr. Chumley's standpoint, what he was trying to achieve, and that is he can ensure, because it's on him now, that it's handled and, and the maintenance in the future, or any work in the future that needs to be done, he's not having to look to a homeowners association or other parties, it's on him. He's perfectly willing to take that on, and he's here, and he's, he's in agreement with this proposals, and he is here and can verify that as well. And that's the second win. At that point, this would no longer be part of our property, it will no longer be part of the future HOA property. There is no future HOA maintenance or ownership responsibilities, liabilities, or obligations for a future HOA to have to work through or manage themselves. And so from that standpoint, it's a win, we think, from the project standpoint, from the future homeowner association concern standpoint. We also think it's a win for the county because at this point, the county having to navigate through a homeowners association and another private owner just puts a lot of boulders in the way that you kind of got to move from the county standpoint now in the future, any issues, there is a party that's responsible, primarily responsible, that y'all can work through and work together and cooperate and so forth, which eases that aspect as well. The, and that's, in general, that's the, that's the solution that we've arrived at, and I want to really thank the applicant in their efforts here, it was primarily their efforts, along with the efforts of Mr. Chumley and the engineer involved, to arrive at a, at a, at a solution that really benefits all involved on that issue of the dam. We have proposed, and now I want to thank the County Attorney's Office, specifically Debbie Blair, as well as Bill Rowling. We've been working with Commissioner Sheffield to arrive at a stipulation that can encapsulate this concept, knowing that the conveyance of that shaded area property to Mr. Chumley needs to occur at closing when we buy the property. That's the only time we have the control of it to be able to convey it, as well as making sure that the county can have it under its control to ensure that that has occurred, and we're not having a development go forward and that conveyance not have occurred. So we're just trying to capture that, and we've worked through that. And I'm gonna read the stipulation out, and then I'll hand it to Ms. Stone that I've written out, and I apologize for the lateness of this, but again, this is, as we've moved through all these steps to get here, we wanted to make sure the County Attorney's Office was on board, and as well as Cobb County Plan Review, Mr. Dave Griffiths as well, so that his input was invaluable. But we're proposing that the stipulation would be that applicant agrees during the plan review process, that plans can be approved, stamped, and a land disturbance permit issued. However, the onsite permit will be withheld until the conveyance and transfer of the shaded area depicted on the site plan to the adjoining owner, Fred Chumley. And I've signed that off. To give you a little bit of detail, Cobb County, the process for, actually, if I want to start development, if I want to go out there and put a spoon in the dirt, you get your plan stamped by all the departments, you'll actually, you actually have a land disturbance permit that's issued, but the final step is a pre-construction meeting, and they issue what's called an onsite permit, which is the actual onsite permit that allows you to begin development. We're able to then assure ourselves that we have an LDP and can move forward with our development and closing, but the county then for is assured that until the conveyance has occurred, that that onsite permit, which allows the development to actually move forward physically, is withheld until that point. So there's that little stop measure at the end, and this was actually a solution proposed by Dave Griffiths at Site Plan Review, so, and he's very familiar with that. So this, we believe, is a, is a great solution from all sides, and one that we think for a development, that we've had a very, proposed rezoning, where we had a very successful community meeting, community got together. We'll thank Commissioner Sheffield for coordinating that. We had a very productive meeting, people came, were able to express their concerns. This applicant Revive Land Group was able to address those concerns and address the community's items of concern thoroughly, down to this issue, including the dam, as well as traffic issues where they're contributing dollars for an off-site intersection improvement and working with DOT in that regard. There's not been an issue that's come up or a question this applicant has not, in my opinion, successfully and substantially addressed, and so I certainly appreciate their efforts. So with this additional stipulation for, offered for your consideration, we respectfully request your approval. Thank you.
Thank you. Again, just want to confirm there is no opposition? Okay, I'll turn things over to you, Commissioner.
Thanks. There has been a fair amount of conversation regarding the parcel and the dam, which we were all concerned about, so I appreciate you all working together on that solution. And I don't know if it would be appropriate in, Madam Chair, or legal with the stipulation that Mr. Moore is proposing, if we can have the applicant to approach or to get him to agree, I'm not, I'm not the applicant, I'm sorry, Mr. Chumley. Obviously, we can't give him legal advice, but I'm not sure if you had an opportunity to talk to him regarding that stipulation and what that means. Have you guys connected?
Yes, Mr. Chumley's here, he's in.
Yeah, yeah, I know that he's here, I just wasn't sure if I needed to bring him.
I think it'd be very helpful to have it on the record.
Yeah, I just wasn't sure what the protocol was.
Before we sign off on something that is unique, yes. Yes, please, he's gonna have to be sworn in. Thank you, Commissioner Burl.
Hello, everybody, how we doing?
Good, how are you? If you can just state your name, please, Mr. Chumley.
Say it. Frederick Chumley.
Okay, thank you, thank you for joining us today, and thank you for your open lines of communication with me as we sort through.
Absolutely, you as well, I appreciate that.
Of course, as we work through this process. So just as a reminder, we were all concerned regarding the dam last month and the impact that it had on your property, but subsequent to the last meeting, and fast forward, we were able, or you all were able to work out an agreement with the, with the applicant. There was a stipulation that was read into the record earlier, and I just wanted to make sure that you are aware, even though you heard it, I just want to be on the record, that you are aware and that you are agreeable to that.
Correct, yes, I am.
Okay, all right, thank you, I appreciate that.
Thank you.
Yep, still with you.
Any other questions from any of my commissioners or comments concerned?
Commissioner Gamble has one.
Yep.
While this stipulation addressed who takes ownership of the dam, we're still not addressing the fact that it was presented last month that this repair needed to be done immediately. So do we know when that work's going to be done?
I think there might have been a miscommunication, it was never intent to have it done immediately because the applicant is not the current owner of the property. So the owner is not making the repairs, and that's where we kind of got stuck last month, and the request was for the applicant to bring forth a solution in addressing that repair on Mr. Chumley's property, but subsequent to the last zoning hearing, they were able to work out those issues in a way that Mr. Chumley is acceptable. I understand that he has also been in touch with the engineer, and they've come to an agreement with respect to cost and pricing and, and funding for the repairs.
Right, and, because we, we know for Andrew that the pipe has failed, it's broke off, and, and again, Mr. Chumley's getting damaged, but if this conveyance of the property doesn't happen until the LDP, he still can't do the work.
Right, right.
So, so again, we don't know when they're gonna bring forward, start the site plan review process or anything to then allow this whole process to start, to allow him to then address the dam.
Well, the process is not going to start until after the property is closed because it's pending approval. So once the property closes and it goes through the LDP, as Kevin has indicated in this, in the step, and that ownership is transferred, funding will also be transferred, and that's when the repairs will begin. But not before, not before the property is sold to the applicant.
Okay, because last month Kevin stated that the property, the sale, the closure wouldn't happen until the LDP was issued. So we, we still have a gap here of knowing when this conveyance is going to happen and when Mr. Chumley will be able to start the work. And therefore, that remains a concern of mine.
I hear what Commissioner Gamble is saying, but I reiterate what Commissioner Sheffield said is that you have the homeowner who is amenable to that. He's here, and he has an agreement with the applicant for whatever process is going to move forward to address the dam. So while your concerns are certainly reasonable, I think that those concerns are not going to be held more closely to the chest than any one other than the property owner who's come and has been willing to agree to the, to how this is going to move forward.
Yeah.
Well, but to add to that, it's not the property owner that's agreeing to this, it's the future property owner that is agreeing to this.
Right, well, we know that the, I'm sorry, go ahead.
No, so, so to sit here and say the property owners agreed to this, no, the current property owner is not agreeing to this. This is an agreement with the future property owner. We have no mechanism to ensure that this sale goes through. We have no mechanism to ensure that this conveyance goes through unless the sale goes through. So if the sale doesn't go through, if the applicant doesn't submit for a site plan review, this is gonna still sit out there hanging.
Right, but then that becomes an issue between, pardon me, but that becomes an issue with the current owner.
Exactly.
And Mr. Chumley, not the applicant. So if, if we have a scenario where we get through and closing is extended, yeah, his situation is still the same, but that becomes an issue with the current owner, who apparently has neglected the dam to the point to where it is today. So fingers crossed it doesn't happen that way for him, but in a scenario where it needs to be addressed with the current owner, then that would be on Mr. Chumley to address that issue with his current neighbor. Okay. I mean, I can't, we can't force the current owner to make the, the repairs. But I hear you, we talked about this, so, you know, I have concerns too, but, you know, I think that, you know, in, in meeting with the applicant and the willingness of the applicant to work with Mr. Chumley, you know, and working with the community, we had a community meeting a few months ago, and they've come to an agreement, and one that Mr. Chumley is amenable to, so we'll see how it gets through the process, if it's approved.
Okay, District Four is on a hot seat today.
Okay, is there anything else from anyone that you guys would like to add? No?
Okay.
All righty, well, then let's go ahead and move forward. Legal question?
Bill?
Regarding the agreement with Chumley and the applicant, that's a private agreement, I understand, so there isn't anything that I can incorporate into any type of stipulation that, that's solely between them outside of the stipulation that Kevin read into the record?
Outside of the stipulation, but the stipulation doesn't allow the, doesn't allow the development to go forward until that conveyance has occurred. So the stipulation would take care of that.
So as I read my motion, do I need to get a copy of what Kevin had and read that, or?
He, he's already read it into the record and he's provided it to Ms. Stone, so I think that would be sufficient that you include that.
Okay, okay. Just wanted to double check. Thank you. Okay. All right, well, let's move forward. I appreciate everyone's involvement. Mr. Chumley, you've been extremely engaged from the very beginning, as well as some homeowners in, in the area. I always appreciate community meetings because you have an opportunity to learn not just about the zoning application, but other issues that may be occurring in the area that you may not be aware of, and I was able to learn of a few things, a few issues that homeowners and residents in the area are dealing with that would allow me an opportunity to address outside of the zoning application, so I'll certainly be in touch with you, Mr. Chumley and the community to address some of those other issues. I am supportive of staff's recommendation on, on this property. I'm glad to see that we were able to work something out regarding the dam, which was a little concerning for me, having the HOA to access Mr. Chumley's property on his driveway to access, excuse me, the, the, the dam, so I'm glad now that, that, that won't be an issue for you. And I am prepared, Chair, with that, to read my motion. Let me go back, just toggling. Okay, I make a motion to approve Z-10 with the following conditions. To include the letter of agreeable stipulations from Kevin Moore dated July 9th, 2025. To also include the supplemental letter dated 6/16/2025 from Kevin Moore. To include an email dated and timestamped 6/16/2025 at 9:55 a.m. to be included in the record to serve as a supplement to the letter of agreeable conditions from Kevin Moore dated May 25th. Let's just strike that, Robin, because we had a supplemental, we, we had a letter after that, so we can strike that motion. Now I just want to address some of the items on the stipulation letter. Number 12, number 15. Let me just toggle back. Okay. Hold on. Sorry about that. 12. Okay. To make the following revisions to the stipulation letter dated July 9th, 2025. On item 12, the detention pond should reflect inclusion of a vinyl, a black vinyl clad fencing around the detention ponds. Okay. And that the elevations shall be substantially similar to the elevations submitted on June With the district commissioner to approve the final elevations. District commissioner to approve the final site plan. And district commissioner to improve, approve, excuse me, the final landscaping plan. And all other staff comments and recommendations, not otherwise in conflict. Hold on, hope, just, I'm sorry. Let me just make sure that the monument sign is on both sides of the street, hold on. And also to update stipulation number eight of the Janot, July 9th letter, that the monument sign should be on both sides of the street or both sides of the entrance. And that concludes my motion.
All right, is there any further discussion? Call the question. Motion carries five zero. Thank you, Commissioners.
Next case is rezoning case Z-13 of 2025. Alliance Residential Company requests a rezoning from RRC to RRC for a multifamily residential development in land lots 949, 978, and 979 of the 17th district. The property is located on the southwestern side of Cobb Parkway, northwest of Verve View Parkway. The applicant is present. Is there anyone here opposed to rezoning case Z-13, June 9? One? Okay, let's break it so there's one person opposed. All those who wish to address the board, please come forward to be sworn in.
For the record, my name is Parks Up with the Law Firm, Sam Larkin-Huff, and I represent Alliance in relation to this rezoning application before you this morning. Wanted to go through a brief presentation showing you the, the subject property. It's a redevelopment of a existing Homewood Suites that's shown here on the bottom part, portion of the slide, and you know that the area very well, just north of the property is Cumberland Mall, on the opposite side of 41, and a little north of that is a, a little baseball stadium. So we are in the middle of the Cumberland Gallery SCID. It's heart of a regional activity center, access to the interstate's transit and all that. This is a closer up view showing the existing Homewood Suites that is a 35-year-old apart, or hotel, primed for redevelopment, and you can see in the foreground, you've got Cobb Parkway just beyond us. We actually have a little bit of frontage on Cobb Parkway that we front on a, on a private road that connects to an office development. There's a shopping center between us and Cobb Parkway, and then the, on the other side is Acres Mill, and you are very familiar with the, a significant amount of commercial development there. This is the close-up view of the property. You can see, again, it has very narrow frontage on 41, although it does not directly, directly connect to 41 because of that road that we connect to, just to our east, if you will. And this slide is showing you that we're 300 feet from a transit stop. This is, again, in the heart of the regional activity center. It is, transit is 300 feet. This is where you put people. When you have transit there, this is where you put people. These couple of slides showing circulator routes that are right in the area that include that transit stop, showing access to shopping, jobs, and such, so this is exactly where you expect this kind of density. This is a proposed redevelopment to a wrap product, and so it is a, an apartment home community, 300 units, and it wraps a parking deck. And we really want to make the important point here that this is the highest and best way to develop especially residential, because instead of a sea of parking spaces taking up valuable land in a regional activity center, parking is handled in a parking deck. So it's less space for cars, more space for people. That's exactly how good planning works, is very expensive to execute, very, and that drives a lot of the challenges in development. It's expensive to execute, but the end result is actually a real benefit to the county from a tax standpoint. This is a rendering showing the subject property. This would be from 41, showing how we have, one side of the building would be facing towards 41. There is a access drive real close. Let me go back to this site plan. I do want to point out something here on this site plan first. This has, fire access is designed currently like this. It's, the Homewood Suites is like this, and when Homewood Suites, that driveway closest to 41 is an access point for the Homewood Suites. It, in plan review or meeting with DOT, it was recognized, that's too close to 41, so you have a real short section between 41 and that conflicting driveway, probably wouldn't be approved today, but it was an existing condition. With that, I want to make the point that that driveway is emergency only. This would be for fire access. Our full access point and our only access point for our residents is that southern driveway furthest from 41. Again, this is correcting an existing traffic issue, and it gets people to the parking deck where they would be parking. So this is showing how, this is closest to 41. Your access is on the far end of that, and this is the far end where I was pointing out that driveway access would be. This is our leasing office amenity package. This will be a robust amenity package with the things that you expect in a higher-end community with, you know, all the amenities, workout rooms, office areas for people who might want to work at home, get coffee and things like that, communal spaces. This is, will be a fully modern, modern apartment community. Now this, the only objection that we have received has to do with the school board and the school board's objection and concern about the impact on schools. So that star is our property. And, oh, this is not the correct, what it is. I don't think, my slides do not show up. This is not the correct presentation, but all right. This is showing that the 41 is the dividing line between our property and the attendance zone for Brombie Elementary School. So Brombie Elementary School attendance zone is 41. This is in Teasley. Teasley is currently overcrowded, has been for 10 years, and so their objection is Teasley's overcrowded, we can't have another apartment complex because it might have a crowding issue. So Tees Elementary School is overcrowded, and the attendance zone is slightly to the, just 41. Also want to, in, in Brombie Elementary School, this is real important to understand, Brombie Elementary School has 199 available student capacity. Now, that increases, their current FTE, full-time enrollment, is 963. Now Brombie's the newest elementary school. Its current is 963. Their projected 2028, which is probably when this would be getting filled up, their projection is that actually drops to 938. So the easy solution is to simply put this in the Brombie Elementary School zone, which has plenty of capacity, and according to the school board's own number, is expected to have greater capacity in the future. I also want to point out that Argyle Elementary School, you can see Argyle Elementary School is located up on the upper left-hand corner. It is the closest elementary school. It would be a closer drive to get to Argyle than to Teasley. An Argyle attendance zone would only have to include Cumberland Mall in our property to be going to Argyle. So if that attendance zone was changed to go to Argyle, it's a closer commute, and thank you for asking, the capacity, excess capacity at Argyle Elementary School is 229 excess capacity at Argyle Elementary School. So again, solution number two. Redraw this into the district of Argyle Elementary School, which has plenty of excess capacity and, not surprising, has anticipated declining enrollment in the next five years, so it will even have greater capacity. So here are two solutions that come forward immediately to address the school board's concerns about this. There, I could go on a long time about this, but I will stop now. Want to give some high points, projects, fact sheets. This is a 35-year-old building that's going to be redeveloped to a new asset. It will be $100 million valued asset upon build-out and occupancy. It will produce tax revenue of over $1,189,000 ad valum taxes per year. That is $370,000 per year to the county. For math wizards, 10 years, that's $3.7 million in 10 years, this will be contributing to Tax Digest. To the school board, it will be writing a check to the school board for $819,000 per year. The average, each of these 300 homeowners will be paying $4,000 per year in ad valum taxes in their rent, just like I pay mine in my mortgage. Average anticipated rent's $2,000 per month. We've agreed in our stipulation letter dated June 9th that there would be only studios, ones and twos. There are zero three bedrooms or greater. We've also agreed, and this is in addition to my stipulation letter, that a maximum of the two bedrooms is 35 percent, so no more than 35 percent of them will be two bedrooms, again, to address the concerns about it, the school board. Regional activity center, close to jobs, entertainment, access to transit. Very important to understand that as we talk about housing needs, you have 355,000 people commuting to Cobb County to work. Two things happen there. They clog up the roads, they create traffic problems, and they're not paying taxes in Cobb County. If we can get that number down, where more people live in Cobb County and work in Cobb County, they're paying taxes in Cobb County and have a shorter commute and less traffic problems. This is exactly the reason why your professional staff has recommended approval and your planning commission unanimously recommends approval.
Parks, you're out of time.
It says five.
It's counting down backwards. It's how much you're over.
Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you. We'll now hear from opposition, and you're more than welcome for an additional five seconds.
Good morning, Board of Commissioners, Travis McComb, Cobb County School District. Approval of this petition would cause concern for Cobb County School District as a resultant impact on enrollment of one school over their open capacity. We expect for the numbers for this particular school to continue to grow. We've added on to the school in the past, and we're pretty much landlocked where we can't add on any further. Thank you.
Thank you. Just checking to see if there's anyone else in opposition? Okay, I'll turn things over to you, Commissioner.
Thank you. Madam Chair, thank you for both speakers. I do have a few additional questions. Mr. Huff, if you can come up first. And just really quick, we shared a concern, I was very concerned about the overcrowding of the schools, so I appreciate you agreeing to the stipulation that we'll add here in a second about no more than 35 percent of the buildings, the units being two-bedroom. Were you able to reach out and have conversation with the schools about the concerns of overcrowding?
I, I had, actually, a month ago, I filed an open records request because what I wanted to get was the actual enrollment at Teasley that is districted to Teasley, because the numbers they're giving you is raw numbers. And a month ago, I filed an open records request requesting that they provide me a breakdown, because I've seen it before, of enrollment based upon who's in the actual attendance zone versus who's transferred. I've yet to receive this despite paying for it and despite multiple emails, where is this document? I have not received anything else from them. So I've attempted to get more information, but we certainly would agree to petition if that would be what they'd like, to change the attendance zone of this property. We would agree that if the school board requests, we would petition to change the attendance zone.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions for Mr. Huff?
It may be not worthwhile, but just helpful for anybody who was looking at the map that you had with the schools. That can be put back on the screen. Yes, where the star is.
Okay, yeah, so this is actually, yeah, so it did show up, it just didn't realize it, click, yeah. click, yeah. So this is, the red is the current attendance zone.
For Teasley.
For Teasley.
Yes.
And then the blue is where I drew that if you just included this property, the Cumberland Mall and this property, and either could put it in Brombie or Argyle.
Okay. Because you made a comment about Argyle being the closest school, but it looks here from the map that Brombie is most proximate.
Well, actually, that's, the physical location, that's, that's, sorry.
You were just showing the general area of the attendance zone.
Yeah, but I did actually, on this, where it says that top left, it says Argyle ES. That is the actual location of Argyle Elementary School.
Okay, how about Brombie ES? Is that the actual location?
Brombie is way on the other side.
I see. Okay, thank you. Appreciate you sharing that.
So the closest attendance zone to switch to would be Brombie, but it's a further school.
I see that here on the map.
I think the more rational thing would be actually to draw it where it goes to Argyle, which has plenty of capacity and expected future capacity.
Okay. Commissioner Burrow.
Mr. Huff, it is not the purview of this board to determine school zones, and especially for one property that, so that you can get approval for zoning to say it should be in this school or that school because of the overcapacity. You need to be talking to the school board or the superintendent or Travis.
Is that, is that a question?
This isn't under our purview as far as restructuring, rezoning the school zones capacity.
Is that a question I can answer?
No, I'm saying you're talking to the wrong people. I mean, you've done a lot of work here to show how your property could benefit if the school zones were different, and they put three hundred apartments in the Teasley or Argyle or Brombie or wherever. I'm just saying, that's not what we look at.
If I can, can I respond?
Well, I'll, I'll, yeah, she didn't ask a question, so I'll respond by saying this isn't a recommendation to the school board. This is showing a possible solution to an objection. So it's, it's not telling them what they should do, it's telling them what they could do, which I think is appropriate when being presented with an objection for, for the zoning. Also, I too have tried to reach out with no success to talk with the schools, and I'm going to ask some questions here in a second of Mr. McComb. We've also, yeah, and Mr. McComb, if you want to come up as well now. That was one of the reasons why, when you think about a development like this, we could say it's three hundred units, but one of my questions to the schools have always been, do they take into consideration the types of units? When you've got three hundred units, but you've got studios, one-bedrooms, and a very small amount of two-bedrooms, to me, that does not scream a lot of kids are coming into those units. So we are trying to do everything we can to move forward with the diversification of housing needed in this area, but also taking into account the objections made by a party that will not communicate in good faith. So I think it's more than appropriate. So my question's similar to what I said earlier. Can you say how many students are at Teasley that are there by the county school choice process? Because we know Cobb does have a choice process. Do we know how many students are there that are not zoned?
I don't have that breakdown. I just have the total number.
Okay. Do you know how many students, based on your analysis, this would add to that?
With the state. Right. With the state formula, it's estimated fifteen.
Does that formula take into account, and I'm only asking you because no one else would answer these for me, does that formula take into account the type of housing that is being proposed?
It does, yes. It's a breakdown with apartments versus townhomes and regular homes.
Not, not, but with apartments, with these being studios, one-bedrooms, is that taken into account?
No, it's just classified as apartments only.
Okay. Have you all considered the shifting of zones or looking at this as a possibility?
That would be determined by our board.
Okay. Yeah.
So I have a follow-up question, because is there state law that does not allow you to rezone, where you take property that is located next to an existing school and essentially send those kids to a different school? Because I'm sure there's, there's no rules or boundaries on how they draw lines.
The way school zones are drawn are at the discretion of the school board, as he said, and can be, just like the reapportionment processes we all know about, can be done at the will of the board to, it's, school board, as a way to calibrate populations as things shift. So this, this would not be an uncommon act for the school board to do to recalibrate their student population.
But I also, and I'm sorry we're not allowing you to participate in this conversation, but I also found it interesting that two elementary schools having constructed so close to each other. So are there no laws that, that control that either?
No, and these, these are not new schools. I live in Teasley, my daughter went to Teasley. That, as we've all said, that school's been overcrowded for a long time. It just went through construction of about twenty new classrooms less than ten years ago. So these are all legacy class, legacy schools. Argyle has been in Smyrna for thirty, what's that?
Let's not do, let's not do, yeah.
Yeah, so, so these are schools that have been established, not built because of any type of development, which is why the zones can shift and move to calibrate based on student population. So, and I'm sorry that wasn't informed a question, but are there any other questions?
I just want to state for the record and just ask that you take it to the school board, that we would certainly love to have more constructive dialogue in a meeting outside of zoning, where we cannot fully deliberate the complexity of these matters when it comes to how we zone and how the school board builds. There have been multiple communications to the school board in requests for meetings specific to zonings and broadly with respect to zoning generally, that have not occurred and that have not been responded to. I know that they're giving you statements to read here, and you're doing your job. I'm just asking for you to help us, help the school board and vice versa, in us having a meeting together to talk through these issues. It will be very helpful, again broadly, and as we have zoning hearings, for us to talk about these cases specifically outside of this process.
I'll be sure to share that.
Thank you.
And may I just add, while we appreciate your participation, it would be really helpful if you were to have additional information that can help us with our, help answer our questions, which will effectively help us in our decision-making. So the question regarding the state requirements or state data, you know, those are type of questions that we need answered to help in our decision-making process. So if, with your comments, if you're prepared to just dig deeper, that, that would really be helpful. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, sir. You can resume.
All right, are there any other questions from our fellow commissioners about this before we move forward?
Question. You mentioned studio, one bedroom, and possibly two. Do you have the percentages that you can share with us?
So there will be a stipulation added when we, when I make the motion to, for no more than thirty-five percent of the facility to be two-bedroom. So it would be majority one-bedroom and studio.
Commissioner Garble.
So follow-up to that, because I noticed they've asked for a parking variance. So what was their original plan based on constructing as far as percentage of studio, one and two?
I, I, just being sworn in a couple of months ago, I don't know the whole history on this one, but I am comfortable with the one-point-five spaces per unit, considering it is predominantly studio and one-bedroom.
Okay, because we know, yes, Cobb has tried to help control the issue with the school board by limiting it to studios and one-bedroom apartments, but in order to afford rents, people are doubling up. And, and that's why, again, I noticed they, they had asked for a parking variance. That kind of makes me cringe, because again, from the affordability standpoint, more than likely, we're going to have people doubling up, or you're going to have young couples, again, that are going to go into a single, you know, one-bedroom apartment, and you're not going to have parking. So I wasn't sure, again, how, while I understand the stip you want to put on to limit the two-bedroom, not knowing how this was compiled, I'm not sure how that impacts the other things that the applicant has asked for.
Other things, such, just the parking?
Such as the parking variance. Because, because again, we don't know what combinations of bedrooms they were going to have to, to then justify, you know, because maybe they were planning to have three and four-bedroom, which means...
Which, which means the one-point-five wouldn't have been appropriate.
Well, maybe it would have, because again, then you would have a family, which you have many families, but you then only have two cars, instead of a single bedroom, and then needing two cars.
Like I said, as, as it stands today of what we're, what we're going to present, I'm, I personally am comfortable, considering one-point-five spaces per unit, considering the amount that we've now been able to calibrate with one-bedroom and studio. Typically, with those, we'll have one car, possibly two if it's a small family.
I, I think also to add, the location of this apartment, it's in the growing area of Cumberland, where there are a lot of corporations in that area. We have the new Truist Building, we have Papa John's, TKE. So I, I think that, you know, for future employees that may live in that building may not even have a car. They're in such close proximity to, to, to a working center, so I think it may work.
And to ample transit, they're within walking distance of the Cumberland Transfer Station, as well as, like you said, Commissioner Major employers in the area, so. All right, so if there are no other comments, I'd like to make a motion to approve Z thirteen twenty-two thousand and twenty-five with the following conditions. The letter stipulation dated June ninth twenty-two thousand and twenty-five by Mr. Huff with the addition of a stipulation for no more than thirty-five percent of the units to be two-bedroom. With an addition for the district commissioner to review final site plan, and also for the district commissioner to review final elevation.
I'll second. Is there any further discussion? Commissioner Burrow.
I would like to note that this is within the Bird Wildlife Airstrike Hazard Area, Bashford, Dobbins. It is not in the flight path or APZ, but I'm just, that box is checked in here.
Thank you.
And, I'm sorry, what is the height of this building? Because I don't...
Five stories.
Okay. And it wouldn't be any taller than what's currently there? I, I mean, that's fine, you don't need to call.
I believe it's only four now.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Is there any further discussion? We'll call the question. The motion carries three-two with Commissioners Burrow and Garble in opposition.
Okay, last item on the agenda is LUP eight of two thousand and twenty-five. Angela Benitez requests a temporary land use permit to allow more vehicles and adults than the code allows in landlots, in Landlot four-seventy-eight of the nineteenth district. The property is located on the west side of Chammery Drive, southwest of Calley Road. Is the applicant present? Is there anyone here opposed to LUP eight?
Before we deliberate this matter, I would like for my comments to be put in the record with respect to the school board for the last case, before we deliberate this next case. If this next case will be deliberated, I just want to make sure that was clear. I wanted my comments with respect to the school board to be added to the record, to the minutes, so that, yeah. Okay. Commissioner Allen, I don't know what you would like to do. The applicant isn't here, and yes, this is not the first time.
Yeah, this is the second month where the applicant has been absent, and also, I believe, was absent during the planning commission meeting as well.
Yes, yes, and we did call her yesterday, and she told us she was not going to be here today.
Oh, she did?
Yeah. She, she doesn't want to go through the process anymore.
I understand. Have you talked to her to record?
That was the first response we've gotten from her, I believe. Yeah, right, so.
How, how many times was she absent from the planning commission? They gave her a...
Yes, once, once for the PC and once for the BLC last month.
So this will be a third absence in a row. Well, with, with that, I will make a motion to deny.
Second.
Any discussion? Call the question. The motion carries five zero. I believe that's our last matter for this agenda. Commissioners, we are dismissed. Thank you for your time today.